I'm bringing you up on the web. Okay, um, I believe we are ready. Here Chairman, um, we'll kick off the live stream. We'll do a quick, uh, to let everybody know who's on and then we'll turn the floor over to you. Chairman, sound good? Okay, here we go. Good morning, everybody. Uh, so far, this is a special tribal council meeting. Topic today is elections. Uh, on the stream, we have Coley Brown, Esther Mercer, John Snowball, Lisa Decorah, Louis LaRose, Mal Frenchman, Roland Warner, Sheila Corbine, Teresa Little George, Thelma Whitewater, Tyresha Wolf, and Victoria Kitchian. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Morning, everybody, uh, as we open up today, we have a special meeting for our election codes. It's May 5th, 2020. We'll call the order at 8:11 a.m. Mr. Eric Armel, will you say opening prayer for us, please?
Oh, morning. Watch over us today as we, uh, go about this meeting and watch over our tribal members as we go through this pandemic. Now, let us get through this, uh, unresolved conflicts as best we can, best for our people. Watch over the elders and the members of the family that just lost a family member today. About that was.
Okay, we have an agenda. Do we have any additions? Do we have a motion to approve this agenda? On the election code?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric, any discussion? Is there any objections? No objections? Motion pass 7-0-0. Okay. Do we want to start this out with the changes we want to make to the number of candidates for ballot? If you got that memorandum. Let me read the memorandum. On March 12th, 2020, the Winnebago Tribal Chairman, Mr. Coley Brown, requested big fire law and policy group review the Winnebago Tribe's election code, Title V, Article 2, because of inconsistencies in the code's terminology. Chairman Brown requested big fire law to review number of candidates for ballot, fee for notice of intent, states $50 in one section, 75 in another. Current process of eligible voters list. Tribal council receives a list from the enrollment department each year that is extracted from the enrollment records. Process for eligible candidates and a log for ineligible candidates. Payment to tribal election board officers should be 250 and support staff assisting with the tribal elections should receive a $250 payment also. Each of Chairman Brown's issues were addressed in the following sections. Eligible voters list, C-section 5-202 subsections B and D, process for eligible candidates, C-section 5-204, tribal election board, election board and support staff payments, C-election 5-209, fee for notice of intent, C-election 5-216, number of candidates, C-section 5-218, and fee for notice of intent. Fire was unable to find his error in the language code. We'll go from there. Is there any suggestions in the comments on the changes we should make today?
No, Mr. Chair, this is Mal. I've had a chance to review these, uh, the codes here. I'm in full support of the suggested language that was proposed. And the addition that is also on air in case of a natural disaster. Where I stand on that right now. I guess, uh, one concern that someone wanted to see, and I don't know how we would take care of that, was duties of Sergeant at Arms. And I guess I just have, you know, one little hiccup about it is that I see that's the problem with the policies and man's laws and stuff like that. Who's to say the next governing body after us will change this again? Thank you.
That is totally true, Mal.
Uh, Coley, I have something.
Yes.
It's under 5-204, section, uh, it says number two. It says decision, um, of the tribal council on eligibility of the candidate shall be final. And we need to add that, um, somehow in the wording for it to be final is that it needs to come from the eligible voters list because on our last one, the, somebody wasn't eligible, but yet the council had put them on that list. So it needs to state that final needs to come from the, uh, eligible voters list.
That, that person was on the eligible voters list, so it was final.
No, the problem with that is that, that this person came in, um, and I don't have that with me right now, but, um, after to debate it that he wasn't on air or that person wasn't on air and they get on air. And after the, um, man, I don't have that in front of me. Um, there was a deadline where you can, um, say disagree with it, any, any person on a reservation can disagree with it. And the council had did that after that deadline, so there was no way for anybody to disagree with that. And it said that all tribal council, uh, their decision is final.
Uh, that's incorrect. We, um, we post the eligible voters list and then there's a window of time when individual tribal members um, can come in there and contest that list. And that individual tribal member came in and brought his documentation and there was a lengthy discussion. I mean, I, I feel like we talked about it more than one time. And then, um, a motion was made that that person was going to be placed on the eligible voters list. And it's become a real, um, conflict for me and the part, I guess, I, on one hand, he came in, he contested it, the council made a motion and he made it on the list. What I didn't agree with and what I wasn't advocating for at that time was for him to turn around and run for council. So I think, you know, we can all agree that it caused a lot of problems for us. And, you know, I feel like when we said, yeah, we're going to claim that land in South Sioux, that's going to, you know, these papers here say that at some point was the language was there. And so that decision was made on that discussion. And then what happened next was out of our control and it created the mess that we have before of us. So I, I agree that, um, we need to figure that out. But I don't agree with it being portrayed as something that was, was not met in a, within accordance with the election schedule. But, um, I, I, I wasn't, I'm not here to fight for Tony. I just want to make that clear. I'm not here to like carry this on forever and ever. I just want to get it taken care of, but it created a lot of trouble and then it, it makes people saying things that aren't true that happened. And so he did follow the process, the council did, um, put him on the eligible voters list. But at no time during that discussion did that person ever express that they were going to turn around and run for council. And so in some way, you know, I feel like he used me, so. Um, I just want to say that and to clear the air on that, like, I don't want to fight about this over and over again. That just happened and it was bad. Um, so I just want to respond to you in that way because I do want to clear it up and I don't want to, you know, I guess I felt tricked. Maybe that's the best way I could say it.
But I just wanted to have that, uh, language in there clear, so you know that this won't be turned into something like that again.
And this is Esther. Um, I would also like to, I would like to see a, a way that we're differentiating between an eligible voter and an eligible can, uh, a person who's eligible to run for elections because, um, we do have from that resolution, I believe it was in 15 or 16, but we have at least nine former council members that, you know, are not able to run um, for office. And then the language in that resolution also precludes anybody who's been terminated from the tribe for certain, um, infractions. And so, um, that has put us in a position of having people who technically are eligible to vote, but they're not eligible to run for council. And right now, the current practice is just to put everybody on one list without delineating in any way whether or not they're actually eligible to run for office.
Chairman.
Yes.
The, uh, reservation boundary lines have been set. And I think it's pretty clear that if you are enrolled, that you can, I guess, vote. I don't know, are we, are we doing on-res voting or off-res voting as well? Is it only on-res?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we're only doing on reservation voting, so the, the boundary lines are pretty clear. If you're on the reservation, you can vote and run for council. And I, I kind of don't see what the, um, mix up on that would be. So if we can use one list, if they're on the reservation, they're on the reservation.
Was a resolution that was passed in 2016 that stated certain individuals would not be eligible to run. And that's what I'm referring to.
And that, I believe the language is okay in the suggested. And, uh, we can take care of that, we can take care of that on June 22nd, challenges to the eligible voters list. And, uh, and we'll see how that goes. And when it, when, um, Tori said, uh, mentioned, just to kind of clear that it was approved by the tribal council, there was a vote of the tribal council and it wasn't unanimous. I don't know the vote right now, but it was an unanimous vote. And that's how the individual was put on the eligible voters list.
Clarification on that. Clarification on that, there was a five signature that was done on that and there should be no five signatures anywhere in this election.
That's a, that's a separate issue. The first issue is this person on the eligible voters list. And if I remember correctly, Chairman, you voted yes. And the, we were having a discussion about this land and we said, and then it came down to geez, how come nobody likes Tony? Like, it was just a big fight over Tony and, um, and we were saying if this was like an opportunity for the tribe and if this was in some way beneficial for the tribe to take footings, um, in South Sioux or to claim ancestral lands in Illinois, we'd be like, yeah, you know, that's our land and, and we'd assert that sovereignty in that direction. And so it was a discussion about sovereignty we had that day and, and I think, um, our, our councilman, um, LaRose, um, somebody said, you know, let's, um, let's go rogue and I said, yeah, let's go rogue and, and then it kind of, you know, took on a different spirit. And then what happened after that turned really negative, but when the point with that decision was made, it was made in the spirit of sovereignty, it was made in the spirit of, of rogueness and asserting some type of, um, authority and placement and, and claiming that as reservation land in South Sioux. And so Tony didn't make up those documents, these documents came from the agency, you know, this is however the land was dealt with at that time in our history, so. And here we are, you know, having to kind of resolve that, but I just want to, um, say that because, and then the thing that, and then the next thing that happened with the number of candidates, uh, that, that's a whole separate issue because the number of seats to be filled weren't double the candidates. And so that was a way of being resolved, resolving that. And I really wish we would have took care of that and somebody would have thought of that in the primary election. Because after the primary election, everybody knew who seven and eight was and it made it really sticky. And, and maybe it was in maybe bad form for some people to put that, um, result, um, five signature forward. And then it really created like, um, people did something wrong when we should have made these corrections.
Coley. Coley, we are going through court, so we shouldn't be discussing this person. All I'm talking about is, uh, the language in the, in this, uh, election thing. I don't, I'm not talking about no real individual at this time. I'm just talking about the language. So if we can refrain from talking from that person right now, it's important now, so we can't be talking about it.
Those changes are going to impact that court case, so it is an issue. Because it's either, it's either going to fix it or it's going to, or not fix it. I mean, that's, you're, you don't have a court case. Fault where there's fault.
Sheila, can you interject here because you're the lawyer and you need to, can't be talking about this person only the process.
Yeah, and you know, I have some, I have a suggestion and you can take it or leave it if you want, but I was thinking that at least to prevent some of what the court case is about, and I'm not talking about the court case, but I think it would fix something. Is if maybe you had language in the code that you can't change the code more than, say, 90 days before the election or, you know, some timeframe so that it can't be changed during an election cycle. And I think that would, that would at least solve some of those issues. You know, so then you're stuck with whatever code you have for that election. That's why it's important to make these changes. You know, or get, you know, some of the things fixed so it doesn't happen again. Um, but I'm thinking that would help and I don't know what anyone thinks about that or what timeframe it should be. I've seen some codes that it's like six months, that seems a really long time, but, but, you know, I think 90 days is pretty reasonable.
This list, that's all.
Yep.
Chairman.
Yes.
So I think there's, um, with a lot of this that's being talked about, that there's a difference between being, um, Congress-approved tribal lands from 1865 to just tribally owned lands today where it hasn't gone through Congress and became part of the tribe. And so I would agree with Councilwoman Whitewater's statement that the final wording should be added in there that it should be approved through the, um, eligible voters list.
I don't, I don't understand what that.
To get David Land into trust required of a neck come to both tracks land went to Congress.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
I'm thinking maybe to clear that up. Um, any land that is put into trust afterwards or is outside that boundary that's listed in the constitution has to be voted on by the tribal council to have it included like unanimously. Um, and make that clear in the, um, in the election code. Um, and maybe that's, you know, along with this like 90 days or six months or whatever the timeframe is that, you know, you don't add land in, you know, you don't within a certain timeframe and that there's a period for, for doing that and it's not during the election. You know, to add land to what's considered the reservation, you know, in the constitution. Um, but just to make that more clear. And I think that, is that what you're talking about, um, Thelma?
Yeah, but, um, in order, yeah, but in order to do that, it has to be approved by Congress, so there's a lengthy procedure to get to that. We can't just say, well, yeah, it's a piece of trust land, so what's on the reservation? You know, if, there's a process to that. We can't just come in and say, yes, it's part of the reservation. By Congress is the only one to make our boundaries. And that's kind of what it, we're talking about is the boundaries.
Okay, I mean, that's fine if, if that's what you want to stick with, but I know that, like, you know, there's a different trust process too that doesn't involve Congress, that just goes through BIA. Um, but if you want to stick with that language for now, you know, you, you don't have any trust packets in, at BIA right now anyway, so that's not an issue. Um, so we could work with some language and then send it back to you and see if you, you know, what you think about it.
Yes, because to begin with, it says within the Winnebago boundaries, that's what it says states in there. It doesn't say within any trust land, it says within the Winnebago boundaries.
Um, I don't want to make any changes that are gonna, that are gonna, I guess, help benefit Eric and Thelma's complaint against Louis, Mel, myself. And I can't remember who the other person was in there. I think that was their four or five lists. And so I don't want to make any changes that are going to satisfy her court case. I'm not the one that filed that case, Roland.
You made the motion and created this mess.
We created, we, we did not create this mess. We made a motion to approve an eligible voters list. And an election happened. And, and so what you guys are trying to move forward is a waste of resources and time. Excuse me?
Mr. Chair, I think that, um, the focus needs to remain on these changes that we want to make on his, uh, this code. We're getting off track here. Things are starting to try to get, take it to a personal level, which we do not want to do. Uh, the, the objective here is clear. Uh, we, we, we need to make some changes on this code so that we can have a fair and honest election. There was some discrepancies as, as a result of the decisions that were made last year. Let us not repeat that. And so it's, it's, we just want to make a couple of changes in the words. The decision of the tribal council on the eligible eligibility of candidates shall be final from the eligible voters list.
Mr. Chairman and Roland, this is for you. Um, I thought I heard you say that I'm a waste of time and resources and if you're going to mumble things that are disrespectful to me, um, I, I ask that you not do that on this meeting, please. And, um, what we're trying to do is, is try to clear this up and your disrespect towards me at the tribal council college candidate, uh, excuse me, colleague is unacceptable. So if you want to mumble things under your breath, then do it on your own time. Don't do it during our meetings. And, um, what's happening here is that what is being suggested is a prejudice against this lawsuit and it's a conflict. People that have filed a lawsuit against other council peers to try to suggest changes that would satisfy the decision in their case and that's not right.
The only changes we are suggesting is to add that when it says decision, the tribal council on the eligibility of the candidate shall be final, but to include that, um, it come from the eligible voters list. That's all it's saying.
Well, let's get some motions out on the floor and make these changes for now. Chairman. Yes.
Uh, good morning, Lisa. So this, uh, it looks like Article 5-204 qualification of candidates. I think what we're discussing is, uh, number one, be, uh, be a bona fide resident of the Winnebago Reservation of Nebraska. A bona fide resident shall be interpreted to mean the sixth consecutive month period immediately preceding the regular election and as further defined in Section 5-201. So I think, um, what we're trying to do is, uh, identify and interpret what a bona fide resident of the Winnebago Reservation of Nebraska is. And, uh, to me, um, to sit at this table and, and make decisions for our people, I think we should live amongst, among our people. And, uh, so I, I'm, I'm in support of, uh, within the, the boundaries, within the exterior boundaries of the Winnebago Reservation. And, uh, if, if not everybody on this table is, is agreeable to that and then, uh, the chairman is right, we, we should put it to a vote and then move on to the next item.
Thanks, John. Yeah, that, that's why I kind of mentioned when we first started this talk, we're making changes to benefit this, how this table is right now and has been. I, I strongly believe that and I'll stand by that. And as you seen last year, the seven and eight candidates, you know, they didn't, it didn't turn out well for them. It didn't work when they were added to the, to the ballot. So it's up to the people. Let's make, let's make the changes we need to make.
It was a bad year. We had a lot of things. In addition to that, Thelma committed fraud and uh, election fraud and it's just, it was a bad election year.
Oh, I did not.
It made for a bad.
I never did do that, Tori, so you can correct yourself on that.
No, you didn't.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Order, Mr. Chair, order.
Yeah, order.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair, please. We were trying to conduct business. Let's get this done.
Well, let's, let's conduct business between professional people. I don't know if Esther wants to, she wants to make a statement about last year's elections and who was on time and, and kind of how it was, how it played out, but that needs a little work too. I think, uh, the, that person was late to show up even for the elections. So he didn't get a chance to show up early. He would do a sweep, you know, he showed up late. Come and sat down. That was. That was.
To do a motion on having it finalized through the eligible voters list then?
Uh, Chairman, Lisa, um. Be a bona fide resident of the Winnebago Reservation of Nebraska, period. That's all it says. And I think what we're trying to do is clarify that to, to mean that within the exterior boundaries of this reservation in our community, you know, that, that our leaders should come from here because they have the best site. And I think that's what I'm, that's what I'm in favor of. So if we have that language, I would make that motion that, that we change it to that. So, so it would be clear, you know, that so it can't be falsely interpreted to, to somebody, some, some other tribal land that's not within our community.
Yes.
I'm sorry. So this is Lisa, so under five dash two zero four qualification of candidates, subsection one B, as in boy, you were saying be a, so be a bona fide resident of the Winnebago Reservation of Nebraska. That's actually in the Constitution. And then for an eligible voter. And if you use what, uh, Councilwoman Whitewater is saying that all candidates should come from the eligible voters list, then that would include a bona fide resident. So the second sentence, you would prefer it to say, a bona fide resident shall be defined as an enrolled member with a physical presence within the boundaries of the Winnebago Reservation for a minimum of six consecutive months?
Yes, I would agree with that.
I'll make a motion on, uh, making that change, Chairman.
Second.
Hold on. So it said be a bona fide resident of the Winnebago Reservation of Nebraska. Bonafide residents shall be interpreted to mean the six consecutive month period immediately preceding the regular election and further defined in section five dash two oh one of this article. Is that, is that a repeat of what was just said?
I was, Chairman Brown, I was looking at the second sentence. Yeah, so I didn't finish, I didn't finish after six consecutive months. So I said, a bona fide resident shall be defined as an enrolled member within, with a physical presence within the boundaries of the Winnebago Reservation for a minimum of six consecutive months, immediately preceding a tribal election as further defined in section five dash two zero one of this article. Yes.
There's a standing resolution right now, fifteen dash one thirty six. To revise the qualification of the candidates for tribal council. Five dash two zero four through the modification of the exclusive clause. That was dated, um, October fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Is that a separate thing? So it says now therefore be resolved that the tribal council hereby approves and amends Title five, Article two oh four one to read as follows. Did you guys get that resolution?
Chairman, you got a motion and a second on the table?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. Dusty made the second.
Discussion. No discussion. Is there any objections? There's no objections? That motion passed seven zero zero. What's next? Does any other change for discussion?
Does, um, I actually liked Lisa's suggestion of the, the ninety day, you know, that we don't change it, you know, and we weren't, and the last time it happened with, within the election. And it was, it was, uh, it didn't turn out too good. I wanted to let everybody know that I'm, I'm in favor of that. And I want to see that.
Which section would that appear in, John? Section would you like to see that appear in?
Uh, Lisa?
Well, this is Sheila. I think you could just add a new section at the very end that includes that language.
So create five dash two two four.
Yeah, that's the most. Yeah.
So it could, it could say something like, um, Councilman Snowball, Vice Councilman, Vice, sorry, Vice Chairman. There shall be no changes to the election code ninety days prior to, and you could, you could say like the primary election. And you could also, I don't know if you could say something about resolutions in there also, but I know you could say it about the code.
Primary and regular. That's what they do. Down by the bayou, I hear all kinds of crickets.
Is there a motion for that change or correction?
Um, Lisa, in that, would that also include, would that also include a no five signature?
I think it should. I mean, we could even put language in there that, so, um, no amendments can be made to the election code ninety days prior to the primary election by resolution or other. I don't know how you amend it other than through resolution, but can just make that clear. And that includes five signature. I mean, that's resolution, so.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
I, I have a comment and an issue. Um, I think if there's language that says that there are changes to, to the election within six, no changes to the process, the election within six months, that is, that would suffice because if you talk about that five signature specifically, you're going back to your issue, Thelma. You're trying to satisfy your issue.
We're trying to prevent anything from the future on.
You're being.
Sheila did, um, so it's, it's ninety days and it says by resolution. It doesn't specifically state, uh, five signature. It just kind of rolls out five's signature on its own by saying by resolution.
Right.
Is that correct?
I think so, yeah. I mean, because that's still, five signature is still a resolution, so.
Mr. Chairman and counsel, I'm not opposed to any of these changes, but being as two council members have taken, um, legal, other council members, I can't help but be very critical of this process.
Chairman.
Yes.
I, I, I think, um. What, what happened with last year's election and the changes that we're making today at this time would be irrelevant to what happened last year.
Is anybody prepared to make a motion for those changes? No changes for ninety days by resolution, so on, to that language?
I'll move it, Chairman.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Other members of the governing body. Like we're at this point, we can start to discuss business on this motion. I think it's a good motion. So I think that the second's good. Just want to be clear that when it comes to these resolutions, that, uh, we don't have a repeat of last year's actions. And, uh, some things that were done, it was kind of questionable because we were already in a process and there was changes that were made. We don't want to repeat that. So we want to, we want to put an end to that kind of thing. So I want to make sure that in this motion that we're clear on that.
That was all. Yeah, I think that's going to be taken care of because it's, uh, if it's, uh, within ninety days of an election, like if it's eighty nine days, eighty eight days, and then no changes can be made. That's, that's what it's going to do.
Call for the vote?
No more discussion. Is there any objections? No objections? No objections, motion passed seven zero zero. Any more, any more changes to the code?
Mr. Chairman.
I want to. So, um.
Tori, go ahead.
So, um.
Mel, Mel mentioned earlier about how to operate during a pandemic. And I wanted to add to that discussion. And at this time, since we're, um, adding language and modifying this, I wanted to talk about how we're going to put a section in there that in the event of a pandemic or, um, emergency, how we would function and how we would facilitate the election. And some of the TPA money that we've tried currently received from, um, that we have in the coffers could support some of these changes that we may perhaps discuss and, and make. And some of that might look like, um, maybe we have multiple voting days so we can spread out, you know, how many people are, um, coming through at a time maybe. And, and I don't know what that looks like right now, but that we would have that conversation now so that we can make those format changes if we find ourselves, um, with more infections as, as primaries and general elections approach. And that we just have it as a, as a tool in our back pocket. And it's, the language is in our code to allow that process to happen and that we could schedule that, um, ahead of time and, and set aside the resources to do that. And so I, I don't have a, a clear, um, kind of plan on what that looks like. But I think that, that's something that we could talk about, um, now for, for the, to satisfy that need and make those changes, especially ninety days ahead of time.
Do you not, do you not think we would just follow our recommendations and how to, uh, social distancing and masks? And, um, limit our people inside the voting area?
I mean, that may be so, but I, I just, I just don't know if that needs to be in the code. And if our hands are tied and we have two hundred infections and, and we don't want those people coming to the poll, maybe they're, they're required to do absentee. Or, you know, I don't know. I, I guess I'm just putting it out there because we have to plan for the worst for the best. You know, like right now, we have, um, we, we passed a resolution that if you are infected or under quarantine, that, you know, that, that, that. Well, I wouldn't want to violate anyone's voting rights either. And, um, so just trying to have the conversation and up for, you know, whatever anybody thinks to, um, add to that.
Are you going to track that?
That's a fair assessment there. Councilwoman, catch you on. I, I, I like the idea. But the, the thing that we need to consider is how are we going to track, um, these individuals that are in queue? That would be, uh, a bit of a quandary with the logistics side of things. So I, I, we have, would have to come up with a plan. And would have to really be on top of who's all in, uh, in that, that status of, of quarantine or, or who, who's, you know, unable to even function. Because now, there might be some members that, that can't even, uh, they might need help breathing, you know? God forbid that should happen to any of our tribal members. But if they're, if they're incapacitated, I don't think that they could be, you know, able to meet that, that, that vote. So those things have to be looked at. And then, uh, again, going back to who's all going to be in that status of quarantine. We'd have to track that. We'd have to devise some sort of, uh, plan on how we're going to do that if we were going to go down this path with, with making sure that everybody had a, um, avenue to make their vote. I, I, I agree that everybody should be, have their vote. That's all. Just kind of enhance that thought process going along with what you said.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's a lot of, that'd be a lot of work yet to do. A lot of documentation. Lot of codes and laws to make in order to keep people home. Then to follow HIPAA rules. I don't know if that's appropriate, but stuff like that would have to come into play, names, you know, and confidentiality, stuff like that.
So counsel in, uh, Article five dash two zero seven, conduct of elections. It shall be the responsibility of the tribal council to make arrangements for the polling place, obtain all materials such as ballots, voting booths, or other facilities, which will assure a secret ballot, pencils, ballot boxes. It shall be the responsibility of the judges of the reservation election board to verify the presence of other members of the reservation election board that the ballot box is empty of all ballots prior to the opening of the polls. So things like that during a pandemic are going to be hard to do. And, uh, and what's going to happen is, uh, we're going to have to do, we're going to have to do the best we can do. And, and do whatever we have to do, the, the way we've been, uh, operating. So, so I think we should have that tool, um, in this, uh, this section, in this. So we, so we. So we, so we can, you know, within, within this, you know, if there's a, if there's a pandemic, you know, which is historic, you know, then, then this, we'll, we'll do what we have to do to have the elections. So I just wanted to hear, maybe Sheila or Lisa's thoughts on that, on what, what that would look like to have that ability within this code.
This is Sheila. One of the things that I wanted to mention too is that I know some of the states are doing it. But it's absentee ballots, using absentee ballots. You can get them up to 10 days prior to the election. I know, like, I live in South Dakota and we got letters from the state registrar, you know, whoever's running the election, the auditor, you know, sending us applications for absentee ballots. So that we could, so that we could get those and not have to go to a polling place. That's an option. And you, you already have the absentee ballot section, you know, so you can encourage tribal members to do that. I mean, that's just something that you might want to do during a pandemic. I mean, you have some of this authority right now. I guess what, what I was wondering, some tribal, some tribes across the country have had, are running into some of their elections right now. And some of them have had their tribal councils postpone election days. And that's not anything that the tribal council here wants to do or wants the authority to be able to do, right? I mean, that's always an option, depending on how bad something is, but is that, is that an option you want to have?
I would say push on with the elections, but just keep everything in mind of the social distancing, the 10 people per room. Washing, hand washing machines or things outside the building before they come in. That we're doing now because we still have people going to stores and we still have some businesses opening. So if that's the case, why can't we do elections, but still follow the same guidelines we're doing today?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in support of that. I think that's a necessary danger. And I think there's other ways, like the absentee ballot. But if we did absentee ballot that, where people came in, would, would there be a minimum number of votes? Like what if we got a really low turnout? I mean, that'd be, that might not be too good for, for getting a true person who has the support from our, our community.
How, how many, how many people are on the election board? Is there like two, four? There's got to be at least eight of them, right? I'm trying to think how.
There's seven, according to the code. And then there are backup. I mean, there's some, you guys check, I think.
Yeah.
There's two judges, three clerks, and two sergeant-at-arms.
So I, I guess I'm thinking of, you know, if, if like we broke up the gym in like quadrants and there was, you know, every section of the gym had, was a different, you know, portion of the, the alphabet. And then that would only allow one or two people. Well, I guess you can only allow three people in, in those little things anyway. But I'm just thinking about even at best case scenario, if you had to let two people in at a time and, and then at the most ambitious turnout that every person voted and we have over a thousand people on that, that voting list, then is there enough time in eight to eight for everybody to vote? And that's where I was going with, if we had multiple days, then, then that would be spread out and but I, I'm up for anything. I just want to make sure we have language in there that we would be able to proceed in.
Yeah, I agree with Tori. And if maybe if we can do maybe three days.
John, to your point, and thank you, Thelma, but John, to your point, absentee ballot would probably be the safest, but I, I think we'd have a really low turnout. And it, it brings me back to when we were trying to gain consensus on the tribal enrollment issue and we had such a low response to such an urgent issue. And the council wasn't able to make a decision because they felt that we didn't have enough people that provided input. But the couple hundred, the 200, 200 or 300 people that did respond, you know, it was important enough for them to, to put it back in the mail. But I'm, it makes me nervous about people's willingness or capacity, or even if they can't get around real good. So anyway, I, I, I worry about the same thing with, as you are, number of turnout.
I think that absentee ballot would still, you know, still available because we never know who's going to be in quarantined or, you know, like that too. So we'll still be able to use absentee ballot.
I like the absentee ballot idea, idea. My question was about having to have them notarized when they put them in the envelope. You know, how are they going to find a notary?
Before it ends.
Yeah.
Um, I think you can go with the options, you know, like when you see them distributing food to have lines. And we have these back rows to the school. I'm thinking, you know, and we could come up with a plan. And we might have our task force security at, you know, we can get them out there. And hopefully we'll have.
Can we do a drive? Colleen, how about a drive-through voting? Would that be option?
I don't know.
Take a number four.
Not a horrible idea.
Free chicken.
It could work, I think, but.
I already voted in the first election by absentee ballot. And you sign a statement about who you are. On the envelope. It's really.
Yeah, I was going to, in South Dakota too, the absentee ballot, what comes in this giant envelope. And you just sign the envelope and you had to attach some identification. Oh, that was for the application, but nothing had to be notarized.
So may, maybe it's a combination of all things, you know, like providing maybe some in-person where it's really restrictive. And, and then the drive-through, having that option and then encouraging everybody to do the absentee. And maybe it's a combination, you know, just, just what I thought, you know, I do like the drive-through, drive-up voting, that, that idea. I think, I think it's a good tool. I mean, it seems like it would work to me.
How do you do that?
Yeah.
Have to have some kind of device to record, record those votes and stuff. There's something out there. I think we got time to think about it. We got until September 8th is a primary.
So to go with that idea of drive-through, I like it too. But so those people that were members that may possibly be on quarantine, they, they will be allowed to get into their vehicle and then make that vote through the drive-through process? Is that what I'm hearing?
Maybe.
That's what I think.
Well, maybe people who are in quarantine were actually like close contact or, or actually test positive. Maybe we could call upon our CHRs to ensure that we're taking care of those people, that those people have the, the ability to vote and that, that they, maybe somehow we could, the CHRs go to them. And so that way they don't break their quarantine.
How can we secure that it's anonymous? That part where they make their vote? That's all. I mean, I'm, I'm, I think it's a good idea. I just want to, you know, make sure that when they make their vote, they cast their vote that, you know, it's, there's some privacy involved with that. That's why we have those booths. So there's a lot of things to consider. I like the idea though. I think it's a good one, so.
That they could put their ballot right into, you know, so it's like an absentee ballot. It's sealed in something and no one can see it till it gets to, you know, where they're counting them. You know, maybe something like that. But you'd have to make sure everyone wears gloves too, so they're not touching all the papers.
The election board actually is the only one that opens those ballots. So as they come in on those absentee ballots, the election board are the ones that open them.
I think the drive-through would work for those in quarantine. They can just roll their window down a little bit and get the thing and they could do it and put it back. And whoever's there can put it in that machine. Maybe have the machine right there. You're going to have your security, whoever, right there too.
So, um, so I, I like all of your guys' ideas. One of the things that I would, I would add to it is that anybody be allowed to exercise any of these options, since we have a lot of high-risk people that may have some of those CDC pre-existing identified, pre-existing conditions that the CDC identified that put them at greater risk. So not only people that are in quarantine, but also people that just want to take the highest level of, of care in, in the voting process. So when you talked about a machine outside, Thelma, that's a good idea. And so when I mentioned the TPA money, these are all the things that we could plan for, that we need multiple of those machines or multiple, or maybe we need more this or that. I don't know. And so could we put some language together to say that in the event of a quarantine, the election will be facilitated in such way as this, this and/or this? And that would give us more time to figure out what exactly this would be, but it would at least satisfy the code that we have the flexibility to do it in a modified way if, if it was so determined.
This is Lisa. There is some language that is in, on the fourth page of the memo. And it's additional suggested revisions, and it can be added to Section 5-207. It says, "In the event of an emergency, as defined by this article, the tribal council may adjust the election process with the commitment to execute fair and transparent elections. The tribal council must take all precautions to protect the right to vote in the tribal election process and ensure the due process of the candidates." So that, that gives you the option in the event of an emergency that the council would have the flexibility to decide how that process would take place, depending on the emergency. Because a pandemic would be different than like a tornado. You know, it would just depend on how, what type of emergency you had and what kind of adjustments that would need to be made. So that does allow for flexibility and allows the authority for the tribal council to make different choices without changing the code.
Okay. What was that, 5-207? What is that number? Oh, on the memo. Okay, I need to go back to the memo.
I muted myself, but it's on the fourth page of the memo. And it can be added to Section 5-207, which is the conduct of elections. That's where it's the responsibility of the tribal council to make arrangements for the polling place, et cetera, et cetera. So you could add that in there as kind of a, as an option for those times when there's going to be something like this emergency.
Is there, is there any more discussion or is there any recommendations to make, any, any changes right now?
I would, I would like to, so that suggested language would be added to 5-207?
I think you'd have the option of adding it to 5-207, or you could also create a new section on its own and entitle it, you know, like emergencies, emergency procedures or something like that. So if you wanted to segregate it from, from that section, you could do that. Either way, it would probably work fine.
I like the idea of adding that suggested language on its own myself. It's kind of, as I read it, it's already opening up, you know, to what we're discussing now, to make it safe for everybody. I would like to see that language in there somewhere.
So that would be Section 5-225, is that what it would be?
Yeah, if it's a new section.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to add 5-225 to the election code entitled emergencies and include the suggested language. In the event of emergency, as defined by Article, the tribal council may adjust the election process with the commitment to execute fair and transparent elections. The tribal council must take all precautions to protect the right to vote in the tribal election process and ensure the due process of the candidates. And so I, I make that motion so that we have the language and authority to do that, and then we can figure out specifics.
A second at motion, Mr. Chair.
It moved by Tori and a second by Mel. Discussion. There's no discussion? Is there any objections to that motion? No objections? No objections, motion passed 7-0-0. What's next? Any other changes to the code?
The, the next one is the sergeant-at-arms. That's in the same section, 207, conduct of elections. So I think what we're looking for is maybe another, another sentence in there that, that says that they're responsible for removing any, any campaigning items and securing the, the voting place, you know, the, the 100 feet. Last year it seemed like so many people walked by a sign that should have been removed. And there's two sergeant-at-arms. So I think everybody's agreeable on that that should be identified in here because we looked for it and we was like, well, there's really nobody who, who's, who's, who's going to do that duty. So we, we wanted to see that for the sergeant-at-arms.
So is that your motion, John?
Yeah, Sheila or Lisa, is there any suggested language that we can put in there? That would take care of that, that would make that clear that they're, that's their duty and they should be doing it and that it will get done?
I think something along the lines of prior to opening the polling places, sergeant-at-arms shall make sure that all election materials are removed from bulletin boards or other areas within 100 feet. I think it's 100 feet, right? 100 yards, 100 feet of the polling place. And maybe even certify that. But just say that that has to be done prior to opening the polls. So that makes them have to do it before anyone comes in there. And that way, if somebody did put something up. And that way, if somebody did put something up, um they would have had to have done it that day. You know, because it'll have been certified that nothing was up, so I think that would you know.
That that sounds good to me, Chairman. I want to make that motion with that suggested language.
I'll second.
This motion by John and a second by Thelma. Discussion. No discussion? Any objections to the motion? No objections? No objections, motion pass seven zero zero. Anything else? What's next?
Yes, on um five dash two oh four, um Lisa or Sheila, can we add in here somewhere on uh number two? Um, the tribal council shall be sole judge to determine if the candidate is qualified to be elected to the tribal council under this section. The decision of a tribal council on their eligibility of the candidate shall be final, but can we put in there that they that they're from the list? Are the qualified voters list? Doesn't state that.
That can be added in there, yes.
Okay.
I think John already made that motion. Motion. Motion to amend the wording of candidates to clarify the bona fide resident as within the boundaries of the reservation. Eric seconded.
No, that one's just on the boundaries.
This one would be under five dash two zero four subsection two. The tribal council shall be the sole judge. And the decision of the tribal council on the eligibility of candidates shall be final. But wanted to add language that said it would be from the candidate would be from the eligible voter list.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any objections to the motion? No objections? No objections, motion pass seven zero zero. Any other changes to the election code?
I have one more, Colleen. And I'm not sure where to put it, uh um but I would like to add drug testing for candidates prior to intent.
What?
Drug testing for candidates prior to intent.
For clarification, would that be when they submit the notice of intent? Or at a different time?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, at the notice of intent.
So if that was gonna go somewhere, would it go under qualification of candidates? Maybe they have completed a a drug test and came back negative?
As about language we gotta discuss. Who's it gonna be? Is it gonna be paid for by themselves? Do they do it prior? Just like a random test?
Paid by them. I drug test down something that's gonna take all the drug, I mean, not just a the urine will just specify, doesn't it? Just specify alcohol or I'm not sure how those, what they read on those tests.
If they do what's called a ten-panel test on a urine test, it'll identify like ten different um substances. Uh I'm not sure what the um the random tests that are given to employees right now, I don't know if they're ten-panel or five-panel tests, but that's that determines.
It's a five-panel.
Five-panel, it'll just determine what those five substances are then. And it doesn't detect alcohol that.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be, it can be a blood test, but it has to be almost right away. You know, if somebody is is drunk at the time and they would do.
I'll go back to that goal.
The the urine test? It depends on the substance. Some substances will metabolize in like twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Other substances like um THC take up to like thirty days to get out of the system. And it depends on your body makeup as well. So some things stay in longer, or if you metabolize things faster, you know, it might go through faster, but it's usually about thirty days.
Chairman, I have a comment. I think it's a good idea, but I would like to see it done prior to being seated, like prior, like if if you don't even know if you're gonna win, then why would you pay for a a drug test? So could it be prior to being sworn in, like if you win, then that morning you take it before swearing in, like swearing in's at ten AM. If you win, you show up at eight AM to take it. I guess I think that there's good thought with doing that, but like a position, if you apply for a job, you don't have to pay for your own drug test to apply for a job. You take the drug test once you get the job. And then they determine in that pre-screening process through your background check, through your um whatever that you um would be eligible. One thing that I would add to this conversation because it's a good topic is a credit check. You know, like people, um when you apply for a a high position with an organization in a in a top management position, they run your credit because your credit worthiness is a a factor of your um your credit person. And if you have money problems, you're more apt to um engage in dishonest behavior. And so I think if we're gonna do the drug thing, we should do the credit thing too.
Chairman?
Yes.
Till they come on until they get sworn in. Then I would I would recommend that we do a hair follicle drug test the day of swearing in for the new members that come on. Because that's what we're uh supposed to be doing anyway to our our council. And that is a good point that why do a drug test before they get on? So the day they swear in, I would recommend a hair follicle test.
Uh that that requirement.
The problem with that. Yeah, because the the problem with that is if you're doing it after they're already elected and then and if they come up dirty and then they're gone, so then you're gonna have to set get that seat filled again. So that's why I said the at the intent, when you're gonna uh want to run for council, you should be doing that drug test then. Before it gets too far down the line.
You'd just take the next candidate, wouldn't you?
I think that it's a good idea and it it deserves some merit. And any individual from this tribe that that feels that they they can uh help govern. They're more than welcome to run. But at the same time, let us uh be cognizant of the fact that we want people with clear minds. And so any candidate that that would want deem themselves worthy of running you know, taking a a uh a drug screening test and then signing that document that they they agreed to that prior with their intent. Along with what the councilwoman Whitewater was saying, then you know, that that would take care of it. We would we'd know that uh the the caliber of of in the individual that's running is is clean. There's no underlying issues that we need to uh have to contend with later on down the road. So uh if we were going to require that, then that would be on us to provide that test. We would have to be uh financially responsible for that, but they would have to sign that. That would have to be a part of that. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman? I I guess it it when it comes on to it, it makes no difference, I guess, really, I'm not gonna like make it a big thing if it happens before or after, but if the tribe pays for it, then then when they put their intent, but as you all know, I'm against the hair follicle test and I I still think that that's an issue that's uh yet to be dealt with, but um I support the test, I'm opposed to the hair test. And so if, why couldn't we kick it up a notch and do a ten-panel urine test or a um because right now we only do a five-panel even for the employees.
Suggestions?
I'm concerned with this tradition or not to give up to the hair. I don't think it is. A sacred part of your body. And I would be opposed to making anyone give up part of their hair.
Um, so I would like um to make that motion to add drug testing for candidates prior to intent by ten-panel drug testing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chairman? Yes, discussion?
Lisa and Sheila, would that go under qualification qualifications of candidates? A candidate of the tribal council shall and there's four items there. Would that just be the fifth item that they have to complete a urinalysis?
I think it would fit in good good there.
Thank you.
I also had one question. Was part of the motion also for the candidate to pay or the tribe paying, who's paying?
The tribe pays.
Tribe pays, okay.
The tribe pays.
Okay.
This is Lisa. I have another idea that might take care of both issues. Um if there was language added to the notice of intent when when a candidate signs off on the notice of intent, there's language in there that says that they acknowledge that if they uh win the election, that they would be subject to a a drug test prior to be sworn in on the tribal council. So that way, I mean, if you were a candidate and you, you know, potentially knew you were gonna have to have a drug test before you became became a member of the tribal council, that you would be subject to this, then you might want to take that into consideration. I mean, and there's also the idea of if you took a drug test at the notice of intent, that's a few months prior to the elections. So it almost would seem like you'd want to take one then and then one prior to being seated too. So I mean, there's a couple of different options out there.
This is Esther. Um, I think another thing that needs to be considered as well is um does the hair follicle test come back rapidly? Like the urinalysis does, because I thought the hair follicle, it was like a twenty-four-hour test.
So like they lose there too?
Oh, they wouldn't be able to then if they they're submitting to a hair follicle test. They wouldn't have the results that even if they went up that morning by the time that the, you know, they would be sworn in.
I think right now it's a it's a ten-panel urinalysis test, right?
Right.
That's where we're at.
Yes.
Notice of intent.
Yeah. Forty-eight hours prior to notice intent? Would we have to save at least forty-eight hours prior to intent or seventy-two?
Well, is if you'd have to meet the deadline, so yeah, would it be when at four thirty PM? By whatever time you'd have to have your results in or you have to test by then? Because on the next day, we post the eligible candidate list.
In the in the tribal council uh drug testing, uh there's a initial testing upon election. Um, so so when I got elected, I did my drug test and that's gonna happen with everybody. So I just wanted to put that out there that that's already in place. Because if we did it if we did it before candidacy and then before swearing in and then after swearing in, I mean, I just wanted to point that out.
I would agree, that's excessive. Um so if you do it before intent and then the random policy is is um a part of what you follow, then then would you test after you got elected?
Isn't the ten-panel, doesn't that come back immediate? On the ten-panel, how, what's it?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, because just like when they come down for employees.
It it does. We were just saying that John was saying that if we do pre, if you do intent drug screening and then you get tested prior to being seated and then you get tested once you're seated, or is that too much? So would it just be intent testing and then once you're on, I guess? I don't know.
Well, the first test I think would be a urinalysis, which wouldn't be hard. But once they come on, they would do the hair follicle test and that would that would go further back. But I guess for the intent, it's just a a general urinalysis to to be a prereq to running. And once you uh get elected on and you swear in, then you're um held to the hair follicle test.
I I just think creating inconsistencies, like we should just make it ten-panel urine for everything then.
No, no, it's already been put through the.
Why why do you guys want, can you answer, why do you want hair so bad?
Well, we're just talking about the elections today. And so with that being said, uh I think we'd have to put a waiver in there with that initial urinalysis.
Chairman, I think we still have that motion on the table.
Yeah, what is is the language all figured out? When does this have to be done? I've heard like four thirty?
Well, the the what they're discussing is uh after they find out that they've been received the votes, but with what we're, the motion is uh to add it to the to the candidate of the tribal council shall. So that's that's the one thing we're uh discussing and that we need to vote on. That one part.
Yeah, I think the other one's a separate issue, this that this is just.
Drug testing prior to intent, that's what that's what the motion is, Thelma made the motion, Eric seconded it. Add a ten panel and try pays for it.
What?
Yes.
With that signature. With that'll be with the signed consent, a waiver.
Are you adding to the motion? It was already made.
I I think that's just part of the process, I don't think it needs to be in a motion, I mean, for anybody has to sign their waiver to have their results provided for for this, so I don't think it needs to be, yeah, that's standard.
Standard.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any more discussion?
I have a question, this is Esther, who's gonna be responsible for the collection of these results? Like who's gonna be on responsible on the on the tribe side to receive this information from the testing agency?
I would think that because it's a tribal council candidates and we do have our own tribal council that would follow that same process, which is Teresa and to the chairman's office and then to their to the rest of the council.
All right, thank you.
And that's that's kind of been a practice to standard.
Just wanna have that clear, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Are there any objections?
May I?
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Eric? Who was the second one? Tori? Tori in favor?
Thelma.
Thelma? Is that Roland?
Correct.
This is John, I vote yes, chairman.
No. Any objections? Louis? Mal object? Okay, that's five yes, two no, zero abstention, motion pass, five two zero. Drug testing prior to intent. Any other changes to the election code?
I think on the last one, we need to keep, I would like to have it stay at six for the primary.
I would agree with that.
Chairman, I I disagree with that, I would like to see language be that the number of candidates to appear on the ballot are double the seats to be filled. So that there's a fair ratio of of candidates versus seats being filled and not in balance with four, six.
Is there a motion out there?
I make a motion to add modified language to the election code that says that the the number of candidates to appear on the ballot will be two times that of the seats to be filled.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Second by Mal. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Is there any objections to the motion?
I object.
Object.
I object.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say your name.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Melton.
Is that three yes? I have yes, Tori, Mal and Louis so far. Is there any that are in favor of this motion? Okay, who objects? Vote no.
Aye.
Thelma.
Roland.
That's no, Eric, Thelma and Roland, abstentions.
Chairman, sorry, I was on mute, I vote I vote no.
You vote no. Okay, that's three yes and four no. Tori, Mal and Louis voted yes, Eric, Thelma, Roland and John voted no. The motion failed three, four, zero. Any other additions, any changes to the election code?
Do what you think. You're your own man.
No other, no other changes to the election code?
Chairman, this is Sheila, did you have some just dollar amounts that you wanted changed, as I recall? And those would be almost more.
There was.
I think it was two hundred and fifty for staff that helps, for the election board and staff that works at the election. And maybe that changes with, you know, curbside voting and things like that, but that was one of the items that you had mentioned earlier in in email.
Didn't didn't we already take care of that in in previous? I I thought that we addressed that and made sure that they were compensated for for their time and it was, wasn't it not at two hundred and fifty per person? I thought we already took care of that for those for that election board.
It's been brought to the table because the code itself never got changed. And it was always just like, when we brought it to you guys, it was to allow for the discrepancy between what's written in the code and what our practice was, but the actual changing of the code has not happened.
The payments are in section five dash two zero nine and currently in the code it says, I believe it says one fifty.
So the old code, the revision is the two fifty that we already said that we were gonna do anyway, correct?
Uh, not correct, Roland, that the current code says one fifty.
Esther, did we not already say we were gonna pay them two fifty though?
Yes, the practice has been paying them two fifty and that's what I was saying is that every year we've been, I've had to, well, at least since I've done this, we've had to bring this before council because of the discrepancy between our practice and what's written in the code.
Okay, so that's, okay, thank you, that's clear to me. Seems like a pretty simple thing.
Yeah, is there a motion to change the election payment for board officers to two fifty from one fifty? It was one hundred and fifty to make it two fifty, okay, Roland. Is there a second?
Okay.
Eric? Discussion?
What are we gonna serve for snacks, it says snacks in there?
Want to get into that? Any more discussion? Is there any objections? No objections? No objections, motion pass seven zero zero. And do we need to change the fee of notice from ten and states fifty dollars in one section and seventy five in another? Do we make that clear that it's fifty dollars or do we want to raise it or seventy five?
I would say let's just do fifty across the board.
Let's make it clear that it's fifty dollars?
Yes. I'm gonna change it, fifty dollars instead of seventy five.
By Eric, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? No discussion. Is there any objections? Uh, there's no objections. Motion pass seven zero zero. Anything else?
This is Sheila, I don't have something else with the election code, but I just wanted to mention that I got some news about the distribution, if you want me to, if you want to add that to the agenda, I can talk about that.
What is that?
The eight billion, you know, that we've been waiting for from treasury for the CARES Act. Um, treasury just sent out a a notice that they are gonna start distributing today and that four point eight million is going to go to tribal governments. It's not entirely clear yet where the other three point two million is going to go. I think they're still working on that with the lawsuit, whether it goes to the Alaska native corporations or, you know, the tribal governments will get additional monies, but in the next couple of days, tribes will get money, they have a formula, I'm still sort of trying to analyze it, but it's based on population, tribal employment, population, something to do with the Indian housing block grants and so, you know, we're we're all still trying to, I mean, it just came in like about, or I got notice of it about ten minutes ago, so. Regis wants to let you know that money's gonna start coming, but it might not be all and that there's still litigation, you know, over the remaining three point two billion, billion. So, you know, it's possibility that the Alaska native corporations will get get the rest of that money. But, you know, definitely have, you know, Alan checking the checking the bank account for the next couple of days today, they said they're gonna start it today, but not all.
Yeah, I've I've already let him know what what being discussed, so he's aware.
Okay. Just wanted you to be aware, because that just came out while we were on this call, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else?
I just have a question, I guess, for clarity, I I guess I just need you guys to explain it to me. So the motion failed to discuss how many candidates would advance to the the general election, so to be clear, three would, three names appear on the ballot and then five will get on, is that how it goes, so four and five would also make it on the council? I guess I I just want to understand that.
Does it say to post the top six?
So yeah, I guess if we, okay, what?
I think the motion made it clear that we we will still post only the top six.
Yeah, so instead of like ten, okay, and then five of those six would make it on.
Yeah, the first five open seats.
This brings up something that I that I forgot that I wanted to discuss. It was a, how many, how many people you vote for? I know it was, it was this last election, the first round, people voted for three and then the second round, people voted for four, so that's, I think that's definitely something we should fix, how many people they can vote for.
They shouldn't have moved, they shouldn't have done that in the middle of that election.
Yeah.
It created a problem.
Roland, can you can you speak up so we can hear what you're saying?
Well, there's, this is a ongoing issue. Called for a snowball, that it needs to be handled delicately as far as, because of the litigation that we we currently find ourselves in. So we have to be careful because that still has it gleaming itself out. And I I have an opinion on it, but I I really kind of want to keep keep that, reserve that at this point because of the ongoing proceedings. But it is an issue. It's 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 created a a lot of ripples. That's all I got.
So what kind of notification do we have to do, make? You say we had four seats up or five?
There's, well, the the normal three plus the seat that Thelma is filling and then now Jim's seat, so five people will be elected this fall.
No, it's only four because Curtis would have been up for reelection this year.
So four then.
So it's just four. Technically, legally, what kind of notifications do we have to do to make? Do we just post that vote for four?
So that brings to the point where I was saying that it should be double the number of candidates that are be filled, so if we vote for four, then there should be eight names on there.
Exactly.
That failed. That failed. I guess John's, John's question, comment was have four, we'll have four candidates to vote for. And how do we notify our people? How many to vote for? We just put it on the ballot, right? That's gonna be a resolution, we have to, what do we have to change, what do we have to do?
Sheila, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I can't find an area that identifies how many you vote for.
Yeah, I'm not sure it says that in that section, do you know right off the top of your head, Lisa, I'm trying to look through that.
I believe, I believe it's in here, let me, so under five dash two zero five ballots, number one, it says the tribal council shall provide the reservation election board with official printed ballots. The names of qualified candidates shall appear on the official printed election ballot in alphabetical order. A person may vote up to three, vote for up to three candidates. A voter may vote for a person or persons up to three not appearing on the published ballot by writing the name of said person or persons legibly on the ballot. So if there's four, if there's four eligible positions on the tribal council. positions on the tribal council, according to the tribal code, voters can only vote for three.
To be able to vote for a number of candidates, seats that are open, I mean, it's up to you, then that language would just have to be changed to say that, you know, to clarify that instead of three, just say for the number of seats available, which will be the number of votes you can make. So it could be either way, you know, however you decide you wanna do that.
I kinda like what Sheila just said. Pretty basic. Should clear it up. Any recommendations?
I mean, that way it would cover it, if, say you did have five candidates, then automatically you would vote for five people. You know, you wouldn't have to change it every time. Or you could just leave it at three, for everything.
Well, if you leave it at three, then the next highest vote getter gets the, that next seat, it's always been that way.
Yeah, that's how, that's how it would work.
We just wanna leave it as is?
I, I would say leave it as it is.
Um, council or Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not opposed to voting for however many seats are to be filled, but I'm trying to even out the odds by having it be double the seats that are being filled, and it, if the original language is a three to six ratio, it's an imbalance if we don't make the changes that reflect that same ratio.
I mean, does the council?
Say we leave it as is.
By doing it the way we did, we didn't solve the problem.
What kind of language do we have to have to say that, would we have to, what would we have to say, what are we gonna have to say? That the fourth highest vote getter will, will, uh, have a seat for how many years, for what, technically?
I think that would be.
For the remainder of that person's term. I would say for the remainder of that person's term, whose ever seat that is.
Yeah, I think that's covered in here somewhere.
I would agree with, uh, fulfilling that, that individual's.
That the fourth, fourth highest vote getter will have a two-year term? Correct?
What if that vacancy only had one year term? Then do we put the years in there, or you just say of the remaining service, years of service?
Yes, the remaining service time.
Just like I said, they're fulfilling that, that, whose ever seat that was, they're fulfilling their term for them. Then that would go back to your next three, three votes again, positions.
I agree, I agree, how do we, how do we notify? How do we know, notify the people? What do we need to do? To give them awareness, let them know what's going on?
Election advertisement you do, you know, what you put in the win, um, if, you know, the election board posts timelines and timeframes, it should probably be on there. Probably at the ballot, on the ballot as well.
Put it on the ballot as well.
We also have the win news.
Okay.
To notify people that what?
At the fourth, or that whoever comes in fourth is gonna be filling
Oh.
the remaining term for reps now.
Does it need to be a motion? We wanna make a motion.
So, um, so during, I have a question, Chairman, during a normal election cycle, the person with the top, the highest votes, so, get, it, it goes three, two, one, or is it all three, because the election cycle has been off for some time now? I mean, the election seats. So, the person with the highest votes would get three-year term, right? The next highest votes get a two-year term, and the person with the least votes gets a one-year term, so why would the person with the fourth votes get greater third votes, or am I getting all mixed up here?
I thought three of the seats were all three-year terms, but I'm, I guess I don't hope you're off.
Yeah, the top, the top three would be three-year terms, and the fourth highest vote getter will face our deceased council member, which has two, two years left on his term? Is it two years, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
No, that's not correct, he only has, um, in September, or this year would have been his second year, and then next year will be his, would have been his third year.
Okay. Well, from October sixth, they'll have one year. Regular election, the fourth highest vote getter will have one year. A one-year term. Any more discussion? That's pretty clear how that's gonna play out?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Eric, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn by Eric, or second by Thelma, discussion? Is there any objections to adjourn? Objections to adjourn? Adjourned at ten oh nine AM. Thank you, council, have a good day.